Miranda, can you just let me know when Chris Perre arrives?
Chris Perre isn't coming today. He can't come at all.
Perre, not Pelletier?
Right, Chris Perre cannot make it at all tonight.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Okay, well, I think we can go ahead and get started. If Cynthia, would you please call the meeting to order and do the roll call?
Sure. Planning Commission meeting is called to order on July 28, 2021 at 7:02 PM. Chair Williams?
Yeah, here.
Vice Chair Reese?
Trustee Taylor?
Present. Here.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Here.
Commissioner Giblin? Do we see Billy yet? I'll circle back. Commissioner Glasser?
Here.
Oh, we have, we have Billy? Let's see, yes? I can, yes. Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Do we have a Commissioner Herring yet? Possibly? I don't see that we do. And please note for the record that Commissioners Roger Cornell and Chris Perre are absent.
Okay, thank you Cynthia. Okay, so let's, let's move to the approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes? I actually, one, I wasn't there, but I still have a correction. The, the first line says that Chair Williams called the meeting to order, and since I wasn't here, that's, that's a pretty good feat, I think.
Thank you. I'll make a note of that and change that on the minutes.
Just a minor change.
I didn't even catch that either, so you must have been there in spirit, Chair Williams.
Spirit. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so just change that to Jim Reese, that would be, that'd be fine. Any other changes?
Corrected, or can we actually vote to approve?
You can vote to approve.
You've amended.
As amended.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay.
I second, this is Linda.
You guys arm wrestling over it? Who, who's it gonna be?
Linda.
Okay. And shall we go down the list and see who is in favor? Are you abstaining Chair Williams?
I am.
Gotcha. And let's see, Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
I believe trustee Taylor was also absent. So would you be abstaining trustee Taylor?
For the last planning committee meeting, I believe I was there.
I were either. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at something else.
We were discussing the surrender of the public lands.
Oh, yes, correct. Thank you, sorry about that.
So I approved, I vote to approve the meeting.
Great. Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Commissioner Giblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
And do we have a Stephanie Herring? Nope. Okay. We have, I think I moved through everyone, we have four in favor.
Did you get Billy?
I, did I get to Billy? I believe I did.
Okay.
Yes, I think you did. I don't think everyone's hearing me every time.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much for that. And yeah, we've got a relatively short agenda this evening. But I see we've moved up the staff report to its higher prominence. So is, who's gonna do the staff report? Is that you?
I am, it's Miranda.
Miranda, okay, because I don't think Karen's not here, right?
No, Karen, Karen is starting to learn to enjoy her evenings. And we're so happy for her.
I see.
Get them all back. So I will do this.
Okay, thank you.
It's in the packet, and I'll be relatively brief. So just to start from a town accolades, we want to recognize Peter Kasich, who is our administrative assistant, who's been with us about four months. We hired him because he just has some outstanding technical skills. If any of you are hooked to our social media channels, whether it be Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter, you'll see he's truly enhanced all of those channels, doing frequent posts, a lot of FYIs, also mixing it up with really neat historical information. He is in the midst of designing a brand new website for us, which will be much a welcomed addition in that we really need to enhance the way we communicate with the public, and our current website is somewhat confusing. So I've been here just a short amount of time, but really an amazing component to our team, and he is calm and has this wonderful energy about him. So if you haven't met him yet, swing by Town Hall and say hello. I just, that's a great addition to our team. We're happy to welcome him. We are in 2022 budget season, it's hard to believe already. Currently working with town department heads to review their budget, and the plan is to start doing our work sessions and releasing a YouTube video that highlights projects we've accomplished this past year and what we're looking forward to in the future at the end of the month. So more to come on that. We're in a great financial place. We have been for, for quite a while, but we have a note here about that, where sales tax revenue is actually up 17% this year over last year. And being able to have that allows us to establish a CIP, Capital Improvement Fund, which we're going to talk with the board more about. But town's in a really great financial place. Public Works is actually going to use some of that surplus revenue to do road improvements on Big Springs Drive. They're going to do an overlay of the current asphalt and then extend an additional about a mile, I believe. Project costs $105,000. We hope we'll be able to do the project either next month or September. There is an asphalt shortage that we learned about today, and so that may impact that timeline. But having the funding to address Big Springs Drive and do continuous paving will be great, especially for the dust mitigation. So if you live over there.
Miranda, quick question. So how far up are they going to go?
They're gonna go all of Big Springs Drive.
So up to the, the turn onto Alpine?
Right, exactly. Yep, that is the plan.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you.
American Rescue Plan Funds, we received $385,000. We'll get it in two payments. I talked with the Board of Trustees about some ways in which they could use the funds. They have to fall into very specific categories, which I outlined here in the, the aim. What we're looking for, sorry, let me go back. The Board of Trustees has asked us to pursue doing some sort of utility bill assistance on, on people's water and sewer bills, whether that be paying off their bills that are in arrears, or it could be providing a credit to every single account. So we're looking at both of those options. And they've asked us to dive into premium pay for essential workers, which is basically a bonus for the time worked during the height of COVID. So we're starting first with Public Works in the Police Department, and then if funding allows, potentially bring in BNF employees, ACE employees, some of those businesses that had to stay open when all the rest were closed. So that's what we're starting with, but we have until 2026 to spend those funds. We have just a quick niche update. Unfortunately, there was a changeover in the Outreach Coordinator. They had to resign due to family concerns. But we have Henry Schliff, I believe is how you say it, who's gonna step in to support, and he's up and running. He's a volunteer with the Community Presbyterian Church, helps with socks and sandwiches, and has already teamed up with members of the Forest Service to do the outreach and to, to help connect campers to resources and then also address abandoned or trashed campsites. So we're glad to see that keep going.
Hi, Miranda.
Yeah. Jim, please jump in on that one.
I just wanted to say that Henry is actually affiliated with the Catholic Church, but he comes over and helps us with socks and sandwiches. But they should definitely get the credit.
Yes, thank you. We will update this for our other boards.
And I think it's Henry Schiff, not Schliff?
Thank you.
I'll send you the, the right spelling.
Yeah, please, thanks.
Okay.
COVID numbers, they're actually, as you've seen with CDC, this is kind of old data at this point, numbers are on the rise. They're looking at about up to 51 people a day who are testing positive for COVID. So we're trending in a direction, of course, we don't want to go. As you all have seen, there is discussion about reinstating masks in high populated indoor areas. We're waiting to see kind of Colorado's guidance on that. Netherlands has pretty low vaccination rates as well. We're still teetering around 40%. And while there was initially a thought that perhaps that was inaccurate information, it is trending towards having some validity. Strongly encouraging people to get vaccinated. There's a clinic tomorrow at the community center for that. In terms of businesses, they're able to offer incentives where the employee gets $100 to compensate for their time off, and the employer can get $100 for their time. We're just trying to find any ways to support the community, maybe get ahead of some of the misinformation that's out there. Last week, we had a really great presentation before the Board of Trustees by Boulder County Public Health and a few medical providers to talk about the vaccination, and that's a great YouTube video to watch if you have some time. But we'd obviously like to trend in the right direction where we're not having to go back to masks, but that increase in numbers could kind of change what we're looking at and potentially revisiting that mask order.
Miranda, may I add a note?
Yes, please.
So I learned this, that there's fairly recent information that's come out from the CDC. It turns out that if you are vaccinated and you get traditional COVID, you shed far fewer viruses than if you are not infected, in fact, or if you are not vaccinated. And in fact, being vaccinated makes you pretty safe to be around if you have traditional COVID. But if you have the Delta variant, they've most, they've very recently found that even if you are vaccinated, you shed the same amount of Delta variant as if you were not vaccinated. That's one of the key reasons for considering re-wearing the masks, and that's why I'm wearing my mask wherever I go voluntarily, because knowing that I want to be extra cautious. So just thought I'd mention that.
Yeah, thank you for sharing.
Is a problem.
Okay. And we will have, continue to talk with Boulder County Public Health. One of the feedback, some of the feedback that the Board of Trustees provided was just maybe a lack of connection to our community, more specifically what Netherlands doing, rather than looking at Boulder County as a whole. So we look to, we'll be looking to them to kind of narrow in on, on the data and, and help us continue to encourage people to get vaccinated, and then also to how do we're going to address any sort of change in public health.
Hey, this is Stephanie. Sorry, I joined late, I mistimed the return home in the canyon, but I am here now, so.
Hi Stephanie, thanks. Glad you're here.
Thanks, Steph, welcome.
So the other thing we wanted to share, and I believe Karen has shared it before, but the Clinica Family Health, which is a community health center, we're looking into possibly having their services come to Netherlands. And there is a survey in your packet that we'd love for you to complete that just asks, you know, whether that would be beneficial to you and your family, and some feedback for them to consider. So if you haven't done this yet, we would strongly encourage you to complete a healthcare survey. I put in some special events here. We are getting ready to do quite a few special events, with the biggest one being Ned Gravel Bike Race this Saturday. So we are expecting 700 riders plus their family and loved ones. Huge impact on town. We've been working with the organizers for over a year now. Plan is to park these individuals at Eldora Caribou Room, the elementary school, and the community center. And shuttles will be provided to get them to Chapita, which is the starting location. The cyclists will leave sometime between seven and eight o'clock. So I would encourage you to maybe avoid Netherlands in those early hours, and then they will come back through town, probably somewhere between one and three. This is the first big event we've had in quite a while, so we're looking forward to seeing how it pans out and feel very comfortable about the, the plans that they provided, and we have really a solid emergency plan should anything happen. But like I said, big impact on town, so unless you want to participate, I would potentially void the area in the early morning hour. I always include a Public Works update. I'm not their expert by any means, so I encourage you to read this. I think the biggest thing is if you haven't been to Gersio yet, they've done an amazing job over there, working on the GoCo grant, building the trail that's going to go around the exterior that comes along water and wastewater. That's that $183,000 grant we received. So please take a look at that when you get some time. Anticipated completion for that project will be September of next year. And that's our report. Any other questions for Steph?
Miranda, this is Jim Reese. Did you want to mention something about that going away event?
Thank you. I, I do. So you all should have received an email about Karen's farewell party on September 2, at Chapita from three to five. We will be providing food, so come hungry. So is that you RSVP, send an email to me or a text, letting me know if you can come, so we get the right food count. But it'll be a great time to just say farewell. Her last day is September 3, so this is the day before.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions for staff? Okay, if not, I guess we have no action items on the agenda. I guess we, Miranda, we were gonna say two, we originally were gonna have two, but they fell through for this meeting. Do you want to give us an update on those possibilities?
Sure, they've actually both withdrawn their applications. Yeah, totally. So we, right now, are also looking to have, Cynthia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we have any applications in the queue for August either, because they would have been due today.
Wow.
Is that correct? Okay, so great time to maybe discuss ordinances or cancel, whatever you so choose. But yeah, both those applications decided they were gonna pursue their building plans within code itself, and not come and look for any sort of runaway vacation or amendments or anything that would be the purview of the Planning Commission.
Okay, well, maybe for the August meeting, we could ask the Planning Commission members to send in any thoughts or ideas that they would like to discuss, and then we can decide what to put on the agenda next month. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay.
Hey Steve, this is Jim. I wonder if this, we talked about when, is that too soon for us to try and have that combined training with the board?
So the Board of Trustees cannot, I asked Mayor Larson if he would be open to using that meeting. He's not available, and he would very much like to be a part of it. So we're potentially looking at September for that.
Okay, just, just a thought.
And actually, the one thing I did realize is that we'll have 2018 building code coming back before the Planning Commission for feedback. So there will be that agenda item.
So that'll be in August, right?
Yeah, that'll be in August.
Okay.
Will, will that code, will that code thing be, you're saying this August 3 with DOT, or you mean at our August PC meeting?
Yeah, Commission, we're still in the public outreach feedback phase. So August, your meeting on August 25.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll, you'll be putting those in the packet then for, for the Planning Commission to review, right?
And we'll actually, we're gonna release it on August 4th, all the documents, so people can review them online too. But we'll bring, we'll put them in the packet for that.
Okay, that's my next question, if we could review them earlier.
Definitely.
Okay.
This is Stephanie. I have one follow-up question for staff. Miranda and Cynthia, I had, it was back in May, actually, when we had talked about, we had a presentation on retail marijuana. And someone raised a state level provision that I actually didn't even know about, which is that you can't be within 1,000 feet of a childcare facility. And so during the meeting, I had like dropped a pin on Google Maps to measure the distance from our retail marijuana stores to the new explorers. And it looked like they were within 1,000 feet. Miranda emailed you about it, and I didn't, I don't think I ever closed the loop on that. I was wondering if you guys ever looked into that.
Yeah, so, and I'm glad you brought that up. I needed to close the loop. So new explorers came after marijuana businesses were already established. So wouldn't like, wouldn't have a marijuana business move if the childcare then came later?
But before that, it was Aspen Grove. It's been Aspen Grove for, I mean, decades?
You're talking agadi though, so your question was like, when was agadi, did the agadi first come around? So the marijuana records that I had found, this list like the current dates, and I have yet to locate their original date of, of licensing for that building and to compare it to Aspen Grove. And, but I wasn't here for agadi to be able to really say why they were given that location.
Silverstem though, was much more recent, and they were definitely put in when Aspen Grove was, was, I think they were still Aspen Grove at the time. And are they within 1,000 feet as well?
Let me do, what I'll do is while Jennifer's doing her presentation, I'd like to do a little digging, and then maybe before we close the meeting, I can provide more answers.
Yeah, that's fine. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
I, I, both of those locations, so before there was Silverstem, they were a business called Canary Song. I believe that they changed their name to Silverstem, and that it wasn't a change of a company, and they've been there for a number of years. The agadi, before it was agadi, it was Ice House Flowers, something like that. So there's been, there, you know, some of these businesses are bought specifically because they have already kind of done the groundwork for it, and then someone is either coming in after that, but both of those places were previously used before these named businesses that exist there. And then Miranda could confirm that in terms of the, the years and the times that they came in. But Silverstem has been there, golly, I mean, I think like before 2017, before 2016, possibly.
Yeah, that's still post Aspen Grove. Well, it's still, right, I mean, I've been here since 2012, and that Aspen Grove was in place in, by 20, or as long ago as 2012.
You make a good point.
Commissioner. We love to hear from you.
I, I, I thought I heard Commissioner Herring that you said 1,000 feet. Is that what your, is that what you said that the?
So I'm actually, so I'm, I am only repeating that because that is what was said by one of our people who was presenting at the May meeting. And so I was just asking for clarity, is that, I didn't actually go in line and look up the state law.
Yeah, I don't think that's right. I think it's 100 feet.
Oh, interesting. If it's 100 feet, then that's clearly fine. The person at the meeting said 1,000 feet.
I, I don't know, I, I haven't looked at state law. I'm, the town code is 100 feet, and I can't imagine.
No, well, that was, that was the discussion though. The discussion was around, do we need town code around schools and, and childcare facilities? And someone had brought that up in the discussion. And then one of our experts had said, oh, you don't need to do that, because don't worry, the state already has, has a law on this that you can't be within 1,000 feet. And that was the, that was, that was what prompted me to say 1,000 feet, like, wait, that's really far.
Okay. I think we should check that.
To check what the state law actually is, which is definitely.
There was attorney for agadi.
Yeah, let's check that. Let's check that. I mean, there was a lot of discussion in that meeting, and it was a lot of back and forth. So I think clarity as to that distance is something that we should.
So here's what I'm finding. Colorado law specifies that dispensaries must be at least 1,000 feet from schools, but also allows local governments to shrink that distance for grandfathering existing dispensaries.
Which we have.
So I think it's an interesting point, though, because in May, one of the reasons we dropped the idea of Netherlands coming up with their own distance was because someone had mentioned there was this 1,000 foot, and we sort of ended discussion on that around the dispensary distance from schools. And as far as, because we, I guess I'll pause there, is there a distance dictated in the Netherlands code?
There is. It's, it's 100 feet.
Okay, so Netherlands code is 100 feet?
Yeah.
Got it.
Or retail marijuana stores is 100 feet. Yeah, it's the retail marijuana, and then I'm pretty sure that it would be a medical marijuana dispensary as well, would be the same. 100 feet.
Yep. Okay, that's super helpful. Thank you. That, that kind of clears it up then, because we just sort of let that open at the May conversation. But if we already have ordinance on, on the books, then I guess we're set.
Yeah, I mean, and it, you know, it can be changed, but that's what it is currently.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, I guess I'll hand it over to you to provide some training, Planning Commission.
Okay. Yep, Miranda, can I share my screen?
You should just be able to click share and share away.
All right, can everybody see? The, my screen?
Yeah, looks good.
Okay, let me just see if I can change. I guess I can't change. I was trying to see if I could change my setup to be able to see. So, good evening.
Keep in mind that Linda can't see anything, so if, you know, make sure you don't browse over anything that she can't read.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. So, good evening, everybody. This is going to be a very informal discussion. I encourage you to ask me questions as we go along. And certainly, when we, when I finish the PowerPoint presentation, definitely you can ask questions. But like I said, if there's anything that you'd like clarification on as we go along, feel free to, to step in and let me know. So I'll go over a little bit of an agenda for tonight. First, I'd like to talk about the role of the Planning Commission. Then I will cover the difference between legislative matters and quasi judicial matters. Next, I will address specifically quasi judicial matters, because that's really the main focus of the Planning Commission. I will touch on conflicts of interest, and last, I'll give you a little bit of a refresher on open meetings. So we'll start with the role of the Planning Commission. The role of the Planning Commission is set forth in the Netherlands Municipal Code. It's section 2-272. The Planning Commission is created for specific purposes, and that is to prepare, maintain, periodically review a master plan, to implement provisions of chapter 16 and 17 of the Netherlands Municipal Code. And those chapters, chapter 16 is the zoning code, chapter 17 is subdivision regulations, to study and recommend to the Board of Trustees amendments to the zoning map, study and recommend appropriate zoning classifications for any annexations. study and recommend appropriate zoning classifications for any annexations, and just exchange information with government agencies charged with planning and zoning responsibilities, and with the Board of Zoning Adjustment of the Town, and other duties as the Board of Trustees assigns to the planning commission. So there is state law provisions related to planning commissions for municipalities. This slide here talks about some of the state law provisions. There are other specifics, but I will highlight these. The chairperson is required, and the term of the chairperson is one year. The planning commission is supposed to hold at least one regular meeting a month and keep records of resolutions and of decisions. So the common actions taken by the planning commission, this is really what we already covered that's set forth in the Netherlands municipal code. Review land use applications and make recommendations on those applications to the Board of Trustees. Review and comment on any proposed laws upon referral from the Board of Trustees. Advise Board of Trustees to consider new laws and work on the comprehensive plan. So here I've outlined some of the policies and laws that planning commission members should be aware of. The comprehensive plan, the zoning code, which is chapter sixteen, again, subdivision regulations in chapter seventeen, and just to be aware generally of building code regulations, which are in chapter eighteen of the Netherlands municipal code. Okay, so we'll move on now to talk about legislative versus quasi-judicial action. A legislative action is a public policy decision. It relates to matters of permanent or general character, and it's not normally restricted to an identifiable person or group. It's not about a specific person's individual rights. It only affects individuals really in the abstract. A good example of a legislative matter is a municipality's consideration and adoption of a leash law for all dogs in the municipality. It's not applying to specifically one dog, but it applies to all dogs. All owners must keep their dogs on a leash. No person has a legal right to force or compel a government to make a legislative decision or to pass a new law, and there's typically no application process available to a citizen, and no set of criteria that the municipality must apply to make that decision. So generally speaking, legislative matters are discretionary for the municipality and its governing body. Quasi-judicial matters are different. They are, involve a determination of rights, duties, or obligations related to a specific individual, and it's based on an application. A good example of a quasi-judicial matter is an application submitted by an owner asking for the municipality to approve a special review use. Those are things that come before you very frequently. Or another quasi-judicial matter that doesn't come before you, but comes before the Board of Trustees, is a liquor license. The decision is not about everybody's, in the community, it primarily affects only the rights of the owner who submits the application. The term quasi-judicial essentially means almost judicial, because the planning commission and the Board of Trustees is acting almost like a judge in a quasi-judicial matter. And it, it's true that a quasi-judicial decision on an application may affect the legal rights of other persons living near the property or who may otherwise be impacted by the approval. But the predominant and primary rights that are impacted and the focus on the judicial proceeding are upon the rights of the applicant.
Jennifer, I have a question.
Yes.
If this is the definition of quasi-judicial, wherein we're dealing with an individual applying for an understanding of how the law applies to them, why was last month's planning commission not quasi-judicial? Because it seems we were doing exactly that, deciding if that particular plot of land could, using current law, be given to those individuals, or if they should be retained by the town.
So that's a, that's a really fantastic question. And the reason there is because, one, the town is holding in trust that property, which is the right of way. So the individuals who came to the town are not the property owners. The town is holding in trust the property. And so the individuals are coming to the town to request that the town give up that right. And by state law, the process for doing that, vacation of a right of way has been defined as a legislative process. So the Colorado General Assembly has decided that that particular process is legislative and not quasi-judicial. And I think in the, in, you know, in a way of looking at it, it does affect more than just the rights of those individuals who abut the right of way, because, you know, as we sit right now, the public has access to that right of way, and so.
So I think what you're saying is, that procedure is so close to quasi-judicial that the state actually had to carve out an exception. Is that correct?
I don't know. I, I don't know that I would say it that way, that it's so close to quasi-judicial. You know, when you're thinking of quasi-judicial, you're thinking of what are the rights of, you know, property rights? Property rights related to land, or property rights potentially related to a license. That's when you're, when you're looking at quasi-judicial. In this particular situation with a vacation of right of way, there, the applicants have no property rights.
So I, I think, I think then that, so, because this has been a confusion for me from the very start. And so it looks to me like it would be, it would be really useful to add a couple of more bullet points, explaining, for example, that a quasi-judicial action has to be regarding land or property owned by the applicant, and that if it is not owned by the applicant, then it is legislative. And so I think a couple of bullet points would, would have helped me a lot on this. So, just a suggestion.
Sure, I can, I can definitely add that. But, you know, one thing to note is that that's not going to be the case for every particular situation. I mean.
Well, in a sense, we need a definition that works for every particular situation, don't we? If we're to understand it, then these bullet points need to define for us what comprises a quasi-judicial action. And so if this is kind of close, but you're going to have to count on me, the lawyer, to tell you if this is quasi-judicial, I believe that that's unacceptable. I believe that we need to be able to understand from the definition what is and is not quasi-judicial.
Well, no, I mean, and it's, it's not black and white, so there is gray areas with this. There is case law where people argue as to whether a matter is quasi-judicial or whether it is legislative. So it's not always.
So you're saying it's not two bullet points, it's a dozen bullet points?
Or fifty.
That's really, really, really bad, right? Because we, as the people making these decisions, you're saying we cannot understand the amazing magic of law so that we ourselves could not look at this and say, ah, that really looks like a quasi-judicial thing. That's what worries me a little about this.
I mean, I can certainly tell you, in probably, you know, if I had to guess, there hasn't been really any question for me on applications that have been before the planning commission or before the Board of Trustees, or particular actions that the Board of Trustees is deciding whether a matter is quasi-judicial or it's legislative. I could add to this list examples related to the Netherlands municipal code and what action you would be taking in Netherlands as to what fits where. In, and in the particular case with the quasi-judicial action and the, the vacation of right of way, we're not talking about rights of specific individuals. Those individuals did not have any rights.
This is Karen.
That seems a really harsh statement, but okay, I see that.
Related to that property, they honestly do not.
Related to that property, okay, that again, yeah, okay.
Yes.
I, I just wanted to say that I don't have the same concern that Julian has. But maybe it's because I've been on the planning commission longer and have looked at different applications, and have also looked at the use table in the municipal code. So I, I think the bullet points here, for me, are sufficient.
Cynthia, I would just mention trustee Taylor, that for an example of someone being an applicant but not being a property owner would be a special way to use on a property you don't own. So you're, you're willing, you own the property, and you're willing to allow me to come forward and do the type of use that requires a special review use, and that agreement is going to note both parties. So it's going to note the property owner, of which I am not, and I would need your approval as the property owner for me to do my use if I'm approved for an SRU. But I think in most cases, it's fairly clear. I would agree that the right-of-way vacation process was confusing to me as well with that clarification. But then I think what attorney Madsen had said is that was decided at the, at the state level, not, not at our level.
I think I'm only saying that if this is intended to be education for the planning commission, and in all likelihood for the BOT at some later date, these bullets do not define what attorney Madsen has described as a quasi-judicial action in detail. These bullet points are either a full and useful explanation of quasi-judicial action, or they are not useful to us. That's all I'm suggesting. If there's no way to explain it, then this class is meaningless. But if these can be explained, but with a separate page for just quasi-judicial action, I believe that is important, just a follow-up.
But let me say that when Jim Reese and I went to the Dr. Cog full-day training on all of these topics, they provided a nice list of examples, which we felt were very helpful to determine which fell into which box, if you would, and some that were in this gray area. So.
That would be excellent to include here. Absolutely. I would love to see that.
I will look in my notes, and Jim, you might still have those notes as well. We can send those to Jennifer. She might, maybe they're helpful to you as well.
And trustee Taylor, we are, we are time limited. We don't have a full day here.
No, I understand. I'm just saying if you're going to put bullet points, they should, okay, okay. You're saying this can't really be a complete class, and I, I get that. Got it?
Yep, yep. All righty, so moving on. The, you know, why, why do we really care whether a matter is a quasi-judicial matter or whether it's legislative? And there's, there's several reasons. First reason is that different rules apply depending on the type of, of review. For legislative actions, the Board of Trustees, planning commission members can be lobbied on these. There can be conversations before the meetings, discussions before the meetings on the proposed action. Notice is not typically required, and the decisions are discretionary. State law generally reserves the legislative power to the governing body. So in Netherlands case, that is to the Board of Trustees. And it makes sense, because persons, the people who make the laws should be elected officials who have a direct connection to the voters. So for legislative matters, the, the planning commission should not have a final decision-making authority, and should the planning commission is making recommendations to the governing body. As to quasi-judicial matters, there are due process requirements that apply, and that's because they are almost judicial. You have a hearing that is required. Notice of that hearing must be required before posting the notice on the property. And then an opportunity to be heard at the hearing, and the judges must be impartial. The ex parte rule applies, so there are not conversations before the hearing related to that matter. And these processes, they, they should embody fairness to the persons whose protected interests are going to be affected. The other difference that's important for distinguishing between legislative and quasi-judicial matters is that legislative decisions are afforded greater deference. Legislative decisions are presumed to be valid, unless it is shown that the legislative body exceeded its powers or acted in an arbitrary and unreasonable manner. Quasi-judicial matters, the standard of review is abuse of discretion, and the review of the decision is based solely on the record that was before the governing body. For example, one example of an abuse of discretion is where a governing body imposed conditions on an application that were contrary or unsupported by the zoning requirements of the town, contrary to controlling state law, or an invalid imposition on a developer. Any questions on this? Okay, so I'm going to move then to quasi-judicial matters. So what is your role as the planning commission on the application? And your role is really to focus on the requests that's before you and the criteria for approval. That is the biggest area that is subject to litigation, is if the criteria is not correctly applied to the application. So when you're focusing on the criteria, don't ask unrelated questions. If, for example, you have a subdivision plot that's before you, don't ask questions about the use. The applicant is in charge of the application. So if it's a request to rezone, that's what you vote on. And resist the urge to try to fix the application. And resist the urge to try to fix the application. So I'm going to go through a little bit of the conduct of a public hearing. So the chair opens the meeting and discusses the procedure. Then staff presents the application. At that time, after staff gives the presentation. The planning commission members can ask only questions of staff and no opinion statements. Then the applicant has an opportunity to present. After the applicant's presentation, the planning commission members can ask only questions of the applicant. Again, no opinion statements. Then you have public comments, if you have questions of the public. Following public comments, if you want to clarify a point, you can ask the public questions. But again, no opinion statements. And then the chair can offer the applicant an opportunity to rebut. So in other words, the applicant can rebut comments that are made by the public. And the commission can then ask questions of the applicant or staff, still no opinion statements.
So Jennifer, a quick question. Do we have to wait till the end of public comment before there's a rebuttal? Or can the applicant address a specific question at the time of the public comment?
There, that is really, I mean, that's kind of a process that every. Body can decide on its own. So if you, if you think that it would be more efficient to allow the applicant. To rebut a certain comment prior to moving on to the next person. That's something that could be done. You know, it might be, I, I think it's helpful to look at what's efficient. And it might be more efficient if you just have the applicant addressed all comments after. The public has weighed in, I think you want to get away from a situation where you're going back and forth between the public and the applicant. And, you know, if you, if you allow for the public to make comment and then applicant to address. I think it, it could get into. A situation where you've got a little bit of a back and forth and maybe more of a conversation rather than, you know. Evidence that's being, and testimony that's being presented to the planning commission.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly see an advantage to both ways, and I think it might matter. More on the, how complicated the issue might be. And particularly if, if other public comment are addressing the same issue, then it makes sense to wait. And then he addresses everybody. But, okay, thanks.
So.
So, Je- Jennifer, an important point about this is that if the application includes falsehoods. And the staff has not uncovered those falsehoods. And there's no evidence in the application that would impeach those falsehoods. Those judging this must presume those falsehoods are truth, is that correct? I, I'm saying this with reference to a specific case and you probably know what case it is.
Yeah. I do.
We must accept those as truth.
Well, you, you can weigh credibility. You can make credibility.
Experience or, or opinion.
Right? But.
I think what I'm driving at is this is hard.
It is hard.
I'm not saying this is wrong, I'm saying this is hard and in my view fundamentally flawed, but this is the law. And it is hard to accept that a falsehood is truth. Is because nobody on staff has exposed that falsehood with their own evidence, because we cannot provide evidence.
You know, you can in, in. Related to these applications, you can ask. The applicant to bring back information. To you that may expose those falsehoods.
And yet the applicant is biased, incorrect witness, that is not best evidence. The best evidence would come from staff finding contradictory evidence.
Well, we could ask staff to. You know, delve deeper into a particular issue and come back with an answer, no?
But to do that, you would reveal that you, the judge, believe there is a problem here and that is inappropriate.
Why is that inappropriate?
It's inappropriate because I'm saying from my experience, this looks like a bad idea. And therefore staff, we would like you to find additional information, but I don't think we could do that.
You just didn't start with the disclaimer from my experience, maybe we could say something left, you know, just.
Well, I'm.
I don't, I don't understand this enough, maybe we need staff to research a few.
Yeah, but that's fudging it, isn't it? That's kind of saying, I'm not saying the words, but everybody knows the words and meaning.
Well, if you don't say it, it's harder to pin you down in court.
But no, I, I, I'm saying that the process. Is really, really hard and. I, I, you know, I think it's worth it to, you know, review if the state law couldn't be adjusted in some degree, to some degree, but. At this point, I think it's important to understand that if we understand that the applicant is lying to us. We cannot search out evidence, we have to simply say, I got nothing in this application that says you're lying. And of course, you're the applicant, so of course, if you're lying, you're not going to tell us you're lying. And I have to believe that that lie is true in order to make this judgment, that's an interesting. Now, so I'm not going to go any further with this because that, we could go down a rat hole very easily. But I think that is a very interesting aspect of this particular part of Colorado law. And the way that we are required to review in a quasi judicial hearing.
And, and.
Agree with you, Julian, it's hard, I mean, I mean, it is what it is, but it is difficult sometimes.
Right.
But I still think the, the planning commission members have the right to ask questions of both the applicant and the staff. And if you feel that, you know, hey, I don't understand this, could I get more clarification? And you could ask the staff to do that as well as the applicant, no?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, and, and, and if you can find a hook to get a question in that would get you to the point. Where you could say, no matter how many answers you're giving me, I'm not feeling comfortable with them. Then you could perhaps say, would the staff please investigate this? And it's something to keep in mind and perhaps something to use more vigorously than we have in the past.
So Julian, I, can you, can you provide some more clarity on? The problem that you're talking about because I haven't run into that problem.
I, I.
I think this would be inappropriate at this.
I, I agree, I was just going to say I want to caution talking about specific applications.
Well, I mean, we're, we ask questions about the criteria for approval. And I would guess that that would uncover. Any, any falsehoods in the application.
Let us imagine this case, let me, let me create a case. Where someone is intent on installing. A marijuana extraction facility somewhere. And they're coming by the planning commission, they've made an application. And they've presented all sorts of evidence about how fantastically cool marijuana extraction is. And how there are no dangers whatsoever and there are no risks and they've provided studies. Let's say that one of those studies, if the planning commission member were to actually read it all the way through. They would find that there are actually risks and concerns associated with that sort of thing. But the applicant is presenting that as evidence that it's all okay. Now, the planning commission can ask the applicant as much as they want, how safe is this? Why would this be safe? But without an outside party who is able to come in and say, you know what, I'm an expert in this area and this is not safe. You actually can't be certain and you can't say, wow, you know, your answers are, 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 are sounding good. But I, from my experience, I'm not believing them, you can't say that. That's the case where I'm thinking of Karen, where.
You said the applicant.
Applicant that is literally just lying to you. And without the applicant providing clear evidence against their own application. You're kind of stuck, I think.
So the applicant brings in a document. And in that document, there's a statement saying that the process is unsafe.
Let's imagine that.
Yeah, well, as, as someone. Judging that application. I can bring up that. Statement in the document.
And the applicant could say, well, that's not actually applying to this specific case.
And I can continue to ask questions for them to validate that statement.
That's right, and they will continue to validate it, I think I could lie long enough to convince you.
Well, I haven't, I guess I haven't had that, I, I, I really don't think this is much of a problem.
You think that a person presenting an application and all of the evidence with no counter evidence. Is a fair judicial process?
I guess I have a question there, attorney Madison, which is one is that, does this mean that? The town upon request could bring in their own subject matter experts on a topic, is that allowed?
Yes. Yeah.
The, the staff would do that, yes, the staff would need to do that.
Right, would the staff have to present the materials or can the staff bring in an external subject matter expert to actually present? Information in the context of a public hearing? So if we were to say, hey, we know this is happening. Are we, if we were to look at the agenda and see, you know, I take another example, like a mining company that's going to be like, oh no, our product. Process of doing this is totally safe and it won't impact your water supply at all, totally made that up. But I was thinking of another example and something safety related, but Julian, riffing off of Julian. And we, and we wanted someone to come in who works for. Kind of engineering firm in town who, or somewhere who can talk to the safety of the type of practices people are using for any type of thing. Is that something that we can request that staff do?
Not, not really before the hearing. Because when you're asking the staff to do that before the hearing. I think that arguably goes into ex parte. And that you're doing outside research. So it would have to be something that would come up at the hearing. That you.
No, I'm not talking about, yeah, so my, to clarify though, my argument would be that can we ask some, the staff to do that? Not to present to us or provide us any information in advance. But to present information at the hearing alongside the applicant. So it would just be, hey, the agenda topic is for this particular matter, which has something to do with public safety or. Public health or environmental safety, can you please bring an expert who would be able to provide unbiased information related to this topic? Period. And we will hear from them for the first time at the public hearing along with everybody else.
I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, it is a gray area frankly. Because you're, you're asking your, your staff to do an investigation and to bring information to the hearing. Before, before the hearing and there is some argument that that is potentially ex parte. I know you're not getting information prior to the hearing. But you're having a discussion with your staff to ask for this information to be presented.
So presumably what we would do is we would say, thank you very much applicant for that information. We look forward to hearing from a neutral third party who can assess the science on our behalf, we will see you next month at a future follow up meeting, are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, you could do a continuance and have the staff be prepared with a. An expert to come at that following meeting, now I would say that. Yeah, I think one question would be who pays for that? Expert. Does the town pay for that or does the applicant pay for that? So that is, that is one issue, but you could do.
Well, is, i- is it not written, and I apologize, I don't know this often, but is it not written into some of these? Saying SSRU application that they are to cover. Costs incurred by this process or no?
Yes, they, yes, they do cover costs, it's. There are potentially some limitations to the costs that are covered.
Well, I mean, is that not a cost i- if it's seen that. A, a objective such, you know, subject matter expert needs to be consulted on something that comes up during. An application hearing that, you know, raises, you know, makes it clear that just something, you know. Seems off and, and, and there's a request, you know, made by this PC to the staff, like, hey, we need you to. You know, we, we need more information before we can rule on this, I mean, to me, that seems like a cost incurred by the applicant.
I, I would like to apologize for bringing up this topic, my, my only intention was to emphasize that. This is a really complicated, hard. Process and the applicant is the only witness. And that introduces concerns, but it also means that we are stuck sometimes. With finding in favor of the applicant, even if in our heart of hearts, we know. That the data may not be entirely valid, that's all I wanted to get across and I'm so sorry. That I've delayed this at this, to this length.
That's fine, but, but the reality is I don't know that we do that in your heart of hearts, I mean, if you, if, if it seems like something is suspect. Then it, it, it doesn't meet the criteria, I mean, I'm not looking at them, but there'd be. You know, I, I, I believe there's something in there that, that would, you know. Hold one back from just automatically rubber stamping, you know.
I think there's other witnesses in the process too.
There are, there are.
Uh, there aren't?
No, I said there are, yes.
Ooh, that's interesting.
The public?
The public.
The public and staff.
The, the public isn't up on this, the public doesn't have enough expertise to.
We, I often ask questions of the public.
Yeah.
Because they're, you know, they're neighbors, they, you know, they, they, they have their own. Perspective. And then we have experts on staff, we have the fire department, we have.
You can't consult them prior to this meeting.
No, no, you don't, at the meeting, is, at the meeting, they're witnesses. So we hear from everyone who's involved before we come to a decision. About. The applicability of the.
Okay.
Criteria to the.
And I have perhaps entirely misunderstood this and I apologize again, thank you.
Well, well, it ta- it takes, it takes being part of the process and unfortunately you've. You are unable to do that because you're on the board of trustees. And so you hear the application. At a later time, but I think the same process applies for the board of trustees.
So I have a question for all of you. Prior to moving on. And that is if anybody can answer. Why you don't provide opinion statements or. You know, statements in general as to the strength of the application. When you're asking questions.
Goes by.
Uh, all I can see is that it's not at the right stage of the process.
Right. And Commissioner Reed is, is correct in that it does show bias and shows a prejudgment of the application. If you're asking staff questions. And in your question, you're making a statement that. Either the application seems very strong. Or, you know, say you're, you make a statement that I think this application is very strong, I don't have any questions of staff. And then the public comments and the public. The individuals who speak during public comment are opposed to the application. What you're signaling at that point, when you say that the application looks very strong. Is that you've already decided the matter, you've prejudged, prejudged it before you've heard all of the evidence. So it's really important to. To keep your questions to just that, questions without any opinion statements. Or anything indicating any strength or weaknesses in the application.
But we can provide opinion when it goes back to the planning commission after we close the public comment and. Any questions to the applicant?
Correct, absolutely, yes. So. Moving on, so in this, I'm trying to get my cursor here. The, the quasi judicial matters as I, as we talked about, those are judicial proceedings. Just wanted to make a note of. Separation here that it's not a legislative. Function. So for the, after the applicant has an opportunity to rebut. Then you would close the public hearing. And after this point, no more evidence is considered. Then at this point, this is when the planning commission members can engage in deliberation. And provide. You know, thoughts and opinions as to how the evidence that you heard, how that meets the criteria. Now, I know there's times in the year. In your hearings and where you have, you may have a question of the applicant that you forgot to ask. It's better to ask those all upfront. But if there is a question, you can ask. The chair, if you may ask the applicant a question. And then Chair Williams can decide. If that's, if that's appropriate. And it, this is, it's not a process that's set in stone. I mean, what. We really want to do is we want to try to be fair to the applicant. And have a fair process. So those types of questions would generally be okay if it is. A matter where you ask a question of the applicant. And you think that the applicant's response requires staff to address the applicant's response. Then. Chair, you may allow staff to respond to the applicant's comment. And at this point in time, this is also where there's some back and forth between the commission members. And the applicant as to whether the applicant will agree to certain conditions. That are. That you're looking at imposing. And at that point, then, okay to have those discussions. So following deliberations. The act, options for action are approved with or without conditions. You can deny or continue for further action at a future date certain. With your approval, there should be findings and reasons for the improve approval. State your, and you, you have options here. You can state your conclusions, findings, conditions in the motion that you're taking. Include yours as the staff report your, the agenda, the aim. In the, in your motion, or you can direct me or staff to draft findings for approval at the next meeting.
Or find additional information?
Yes, yes, and that would be if you do a continuance, yes.
Okay.
So on the motions for approval. With or without condition, they should be stated with, related to the findings, related to the criteria. Again, conditions can be added with an amendment to the motion. Any failed motion to approve is not a denial. There should be a separate motion then to deny the application. And what we can do, I can work with staff and I can help you in terms of making. Motions on your approvals. That would include the findings. I mean, we can have general motions, for example, I move, move to recommend approval of. A resolution that's before the planning commission. Approving a special review use. Excuse me, agreement. Based on the planning commission's findings that the proposed special review use meets the criteria set forth in the code. And as summarized in the agenda information memorandum. Denials need to be more specific as to why you're denying it. Your motion to deny should be based on the planning commission's findings that the request doesn't meet. All of the approval standards, including, and you need to say what specific criteria is not met. Excuse me, I'm gonna get a drink of water. And it, does anybody have any questions on that?
I'm a little confused as to what, again, what the difference is between the two, so. For example, if someone makes a motion to approve an S R U. And it is, it is, does not pass. You saying that's a denial?
That is not a denial, correct.
But do we have to make a separate motion then if we want to turn it down?
Yes, that's what you should do. Technically, you should do that.
So we have to go back and make a second motion?
Correct.
That be the first motion?
Can move to deny right out of the gate, yes. But if somebody, if somebody puts on the, on the floor a motion to approve. And that fails. That is not an automatic denial. You should do, technically, the best practice is to do a motion to deny.
How would? How would the failure of a motion to approve be presented to the board of trustees?
Failure of a motion to approve?
It didn't pass.
Right, how would that be presented?
To the board of trustees.
So. So the way that you would then do it is you would move to recommend denial of the application.
Okay. So we should always either. Have a motion to approve that passes or. A motion to deny that passes.
Right.
Okay.
Or do two of them, if, if a motion to approve fails. Then we have to make another motion to deny.
Correct, yeah. And there may be circumstances where it's unclear how everybody's gonna vote. On a matter, and so you don't, you don't quite know. And you start off with a, you know, somebody puts on the table a motion to recommend approval of the application. And when the vote goes through, it doesn't pass. Then at that point, you should do a, a motion to deny.
Would there, would, would there be a time where maybe it seemed like? People were generally leaning towards denying or voting against approval and that the first motion made would be to deny?
You could do that, absolutely, yes. Yeah.
So, so what happens if a motion fails to pass? And so we do a second motion to deny and that fails to deny, then what happens?
Wow, then we're in a difficult situation there.
Yeah, see, that's what I thought, that if it does not, if, if a motion to approve does not pass, then. That's the message we're sending to the board of trustees.
Right.
So I don't understand why we would need another motion.
It, it's just because it's not automatically denied. There's nothing in the code that says that an application. If not approved, is denied.
Well, no.
Is that just a stronger message going to the B O T that it was denied straight up?
No, it's just that the action that you're taking is, is denial. And so a failure of an approval is not an automatic denial.
Remember, the B O T would have the same problem. We could fail to deny and fail to approve.
Right. So, and then in that case, maybe you need more information because probably what you have there is a tie and you have somebody who's not attending the meeting. And you've got a tie and maybe you need more information. And you could move to continue to. You could move to continue to the next meeting without asking for more information. You could. You could move to continue and ask somebody to bring more information to the next meeting to help you make a decision. Those are, are other options.
So it sounds like it'd be like a hung jury.
Right, I mean, it, it, more than likely, it would be a situation where you don't, you know, where you've got. Eight people present. And it's a four, four tie. So the motion would fail if it's a tie.
So Jennifer, I, I think what I heard earlier is that. With the motion to deny an application, we should also include the reasons that were denying the application.
Absolutely.
I think that information is pretty important for the board of trustees to see. Not just that we did not approve the application, but. We denied it and here's why, here's the specific. Conditions that were not met by this application.
Right, you can say that the, there wasn't competent evidence to meet criteria. You know, sixteen fifty five, section B.
And it may be the case we have to hit on the. The, the conditions that are acceptable by all the commissioners in order to deny the application. So.
Okay, any other questions on that one or on the, I'll go back for the motions? So I'll move on to then continuances, and I know we, we, we've kind of touched on this and I think you guys are. Really strong on moving to continue the public hearing to a date certain. And when you do this, this saves town staff from having to renotice the hearing. As you, as you all know, notice is required for these hearings. If it's the continuances to a date certain, then the hearing is not renoticed. You can also continue the matter to a limited topic. So if you've had. Your public hearing. And everybody has been allowed to provide. Testimony related to the application, the public's commented. And you want to get more information. You can move to continue. To a date certain and then limit that continuance of the public hearing. To the information that you have asked the applicant or staff to provide. That way, you're saving time, maybe being more efficient. In only covering that specific subject matter for that new next continuance.
Yeah, and we've done that in the past. The question is that, and then we typically ask the staff if, say, August twenty fifth. There's ample time to continue the hearing to that day. What if it's, if it's essentially already full with other applications? So is that a staff decision?
So. Well, you should be. I mean, you really should be. At that meeting, kind of know what's gonna be on your next agenda.
Many times we don't, that's the problem.
Right. Right. So is the question as to. What, I'm, I guess I'm unclear as to what the question is.
Well, the question is that in the past, we've, if we're gonna continue a hearing, we've asked staff if we. Continue the hearing to the following month. Is there ample time or is the agenda full so that we can make a decision to continue it? Perhaps to the next two months?
Yeah.
So can we ask staff at the, at that point about there, an input to when? When we could continue it too?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I know that you asked the applicant. Is a month, is thirty days enough to be able to come back and provide this information?
Right.
Or do you need more time? So yes, definitely you can have those discussions. The important thing is just putting the date out there. Okay, so this, we, we've really already covered this. This is the types of questions to ask. During the public comment. Or not public comment, but your public hearing. And so next I'd like to cover the ex parte rule, and I think you guys are all. Pretty familiar with this. There is, because this is a quasi judicial matter. The applicant has due process rights to an impartial judge. And an impartial judge is somebody who is coming to the hearing essentially fresh. Without having done any research or without having talking to the applicant or. Any of the public related to the applica- application. It refers to the judge obtaining evidence and testimony from only one party to the matter without requiring all parties. To the dispute to be present to hear the evidence. And if there are ex parte contacts, it can potentially deny a fair proceeding or. The appearance of a fair proceeding. So when does this ex parte rule apply? And this ex parte rule applies or attaches at the time that the application is filed. So, you know, somebody who is thinking about filing an application, hasn't already filed. An application and that person comes up to you and starts talking to you about the, the. Potential of filing an application, that's technically not an ex parte contact. However, should that information come out in. A public hearing that there were discussions between a planning commission member and the applicant. I mean, I think it definitely raises an appearance of impartiality. So how do you avoid these ex parte contacts? Don't talk to people outside of the public hearing. Now, you can say. We've got this rule, I can't talk to you. About this matter. Prior to the hearing, I encourage you to attend. Written materials, you receive any emails, those should be included in the packet. So that everybody has all of that information and it's presented at the hearing. Don't conduct any outside research on your own. Site visits are hard and especially all difficult for you because. Netherlands is small and you're gonna go by these sites just in your regular course of. What you do on a day to day basis. My recommendation is if you observe something that you think is important. When you're walking by a site or when you're out of sight, is to bring that up through questions. Of the applicant. During the public hearing. So, you know, I know. Commissioner Blakemore has done this, that she's observed things at a site and she's asked the applicant, well. Tell me about. The distance between, you know, the, your building and the property line as an example. So you can do it that way. So you can do it that way to make sure that everybody is aware of the same evidence and that anybody, you know, maybe somebody from the public would want to comment on that piece of testimony. And.
So a quick question, Jennifer, so what happens? I mean, in many cases, an applicant will come before the planning commission as a discussion item to kind of gauge what the planning commission feels or to get input from the planning commission on how they should move forward or base their application. So how many of these rules kind of go out the window after an applicant brings that discussion to the planning commission? Before the application is filed?
So again, this doesn't, the, the ex parte doesn't apply until the application is filed.
So if they bring up a discussion, then people can come up to and ask us about this particular item. We can talk about it or we can do a site visit or we can do outside research. Is that what you're saying?
If an application is not filed. So if somebody hasn't filed a, an application for special review use. None of these rules apply.
Okay, all right, just wanted to verify that.
But I also do want to caution you as to how that may appear to, to the public. You know, that you've been talking with the applicant on numerous occasions. And, you know, is there an appearance that you have maybe prejudged the application? That's, that's a possibility. The other thing is if there is information that you learned in your discussions with the applicant or with other people prior to the filing of an application and that information is important to your decision. You need to make sure that that information is part of the record of the hearing.
Okay.
And I think this is kind of can go on to, onto this next slide here. And that is, what do you do if an ex parte contact does occur?
Jennifer, this is Linda.
Yes.
And I have been approached twice by a person that had to do with the, the land, the vacated land on the old part of town. And basically was questioned as to why this didn't go through, why it wasn't voted on correctly. And my comment back was, you need to talk to the town clerk or to the planning commit, or not the planning, or Cynthia. And the thing that comes from the planning commission is a recommendation. And then I was questioned again about the same issue. And so I basically gave the same answer that we only gave the recommendation. It was passed on to the Parks and Rec Department. And so I'm just curious if I did the proper thing there by even giving an answer. But basically I told him, I really was not able to talk about this, he needed to contact the town.
So I'm really glad that you asked this, Commissioner Glasser, because it, this really illustrates. Going back to our discussion about legislative and quasi judicial matters. So that vacation, that vacation of right of way is a legislative matter. It is not quasi judicial. So you're acting and the Board of Trustees is acting, making a legislative decision. You're acting in a legislative capacity, you're not acting as a judge. And because you're not acting as a judge, these ex parte rules don't apply.
Okay. And I was curious too, because I don't know the status of what is the, the Board of Trustees has decided on this or, or the Parks Department. So I, you know, I was very careful what I said, but I've been approached twice by this person.
And, and frankly, that answer is fine, even if, you know, with it being a legislative matter. You don't have to. You have no obligation to provide your thoughts on why you voted the way that you did. So that, that's a perfectly acceptable response.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But, but if we're asked by the public, what happened at the meeting of the previous night? Now, now that's part of public record, so we should be able to basically say, okay, well, the planning commission did, you know, didn't pass a particular approval. Can we go into much more detail as to why that happened or, again, it is part of the public record?
Right. So as long as there was a vote that was taken and that it wasn't continued, it's fine to talk about the matter. I think it's, it. It could be, I don't know, there may be situations where. There's matters where there's an, I mean, if it's not coming back to the planning commission, then I'd say you can probably pretty freely talk about it. I would just caution you for matters that are going then before the Board of Trustees. Going too deep into information that really is not, was not part of the public record, if that makes sense.
Right.
You know, speculating as to why you think the vote went the way that it did.
Uh, no, I wasn't talking about that. I was just talking about either some of the discussion that occurred at the public record or the outcome. But I, I, I can understand the caution because it's now in front of the Board of Trustees. So any comments that we make could in fact, you know, make an impact on the discussion at the Board of Trustees, no?
Right, no, absolutely, yes. And, and that's why I would discourage any speculation as to why the vote went the way that it did or what could be presented to the Board of Trustees. It might help the application or that might help defeat it, anything like that. I would recommend against any speculative comments like that.
I've had at least one person ask me about an application that had come through the planning commission but had not yet gone through the Board of Trustees. And I told them I could not speak about that application because it might come back to the planning commission. And if I was to talk about it, that would be ex parte communication. If we were to see that again.
And I, and I think it really depends, I mean, that's, that's a great point too, but it really depends on what you're talking about. What the discussion is. If it's just the facts of what happened the night before. Then that really isn't an ex parte communication because you're just relaying what happened.
Okay, great for, thanks for that clarification.
Yeah. You're not gathering more information. So if you, if, let's go back to the slide here. So if you do have an ex parte contact. You should let the town administrator know and then the town administrator can decide whether to contact me. And then we can decide how to handle that. Not every ex parte contact is going to invalidate the decision or require you to recuse yourself from participating. Really, the best practice is then to disclose what that ex parte contact was. And I said, disclose the contact to the Board of Trustees, it's actually to the planning commission at the beginning of the hearing. That way, the discussion is on the record of the hearing. And that information then is part of, of the evidence or record that's introduced. And everybody is aware of it, it helps with the fairness piece of it. And so, and then describe exactly what was discussed. All right, any, any questions on ex parte contacts?
So if a planning commission member discloses at the start of a meeting that they had the particular contact but feels that I, I am still impartial, I can go forward. But let's say perhaps the chair or some other planning commission member feels they cannot be. Could we ask them to recuse themselves or how would that work?
So if you, if the the person disclosed that they had received, I mean, ex parte is, is different from a conflict of interest.
Okay, maybe I'm jumping ahead here.
Yeah, so ex parte is really just that you received information ahead of the hearing. And the person has talked to you or approached you about it ahead of the hearing. And so the information that's devolved to you is not part of the record. And so what you're trying to do to clear up, remedy that ex parte contact is to put that information, that discussion on the record so that everybody is aware of the fact that that happened.
Okay, I think I'm jumping ahead, sorry.
Okay. And so conflicts of interest is, is what you are talking about. And there's really two conflict of interest provisions in state statute to be aware of related to your work on the planning commission. And that is that a local government official shall not perform an official act directly and substantially affecting to its economic benefit a business or other undertaking in which he either has substantial financial interest or is engaged as counsel, consultant, representative, or agent. So this is really, do you have a financial interest? In, in the decision? If you do have a financial interest in the decision, then that's a, that's a conflict of interest. And you'd have to recuse yourself. Any questions on this one? Pretty straightforward. The next type of conflict of interest is if a member of the governing body has a personal or private interest in a matter proposed or pending before the governing body and that person shall disclose the interest to the governing body and not vote and refrain from attempting to influence. So personal or private interest is not defined in the state statute. A lot of times, this is the situations that you know it when you see it. For example, if the applicant is a family member. In that situation, you have a personal interest in that matter and cannot be fair in deciding the application. There may also be other situations where you have a personal interest. I have the two hats on the screen. Because the cowboy hat, that's your personal hat. It's something that you are very passionate about. And the top hat here is your planning commission member hat. You can't wear your personal hat and your planning commission member hat at the same time in voting and deciding an issue. So you've got to, you've got to take one of those hats off. And in this situation, you always have to take your planning commission member hat off. If there's something that, you know, an application comes before the planning commission and it's an issue that you feel very strongly about, talk to Miranda. Cynthia. And then, you know, you can talk to me and we can decide whether you have a whether you have a conflict of interest on it. It should be the person who has that personal interest, the conflict, that person is the one that really should be making that decision. But there may be circumstances where the person is unwilling to or doesn't recognize that the conflict of interest exists. And there are some things that we can do in that situation, perhaps we can take a break. And have a discussion with, you know, with me and the person related to whether there's a conflict of interest. You as planning commission members can raise it to the person and say, I think you have a conflict of interest. And and then there could be discussion, you know, back and forth as to whether that person actually has a conflict of interest. Does that answer your question? Chair Williams?
Yeah, I, I think so. I was just sort of wondering what kind of authority the planning, other planning commission members might have if a particular planning commission member does not recuse themselves. Even after discussion.
Well, we don't, the town, I'm not aware that the planning commission doesn't have bylaws, do you?
I don't.
Of procedures.
Well, I've seen some in the past, but I think they might be just recommendations. I don't think they're in our code.
The Board of Trustees does. And let me see if it's in the Board of Trustees Rules of Procedures. As to what happens with that. A, a member who sits on a member who sits on this decision, makes the decision and has a conflict could cause that decision to be invalidated in a court. Just seeing if I can pull up the rules here, sorry.
Yeah, I found a document from a long time ago on planning commission conduct. But I, I think it's more of a guide, I don't think it's a, a town bylaw.
Okay. Well, that is one thing for you all to, to think about. I don't know if you've ever talked about doing bylaws or rules of procedures. I know it may have come up related to the length of your meetings and adopting bylaws. That are similar to the Board of Trustees on ending meetings at ten o'clock or having a motion to extend to eleven. So something to consider. Looking at, I have it open now.
Okay.
So in the Board of Trustees Rules of Procedure, in the event that the mayor or board member has a conflict of interest that requires disclosure pursuant to state laws, such persons shall disclose such interest in writing or during a meeting as soon as the conflict of interest is known. If the mayor or board member has a conflict of interest which such person has not disclosed, such a conflict may be a such a conflict may be addressed by any other board member and the Board of Trustees may determine by a majority of those present that a conflict of the mayor or board of, or board member exists. If the mayor or board member has a conflict of interest, whether self-disclosed or determined by the Board of Trustees, such persons shall abstain from voting on the issue. So the Board of Trustees Rules allow for other trustees and the mayor to decide that that person has a conflict of interest.
Um, I found the bylaws for the planning commission. It's a document that I got from Miranda when I was on the Board of Trustees.
Okay.
So, and, and we're looking for conflict of interest.
Right. How big is the document?
The document is three pages.
Okay.
We should probably take a look at that, Karen. I'm not, I mean, in all my years on planning commission, I'm not aware of that document.
I can send it out. It's Miranda. I can send it out to the full planning commission.
Thank you. There was
And me.
And you. I won't forget you.
There were two documents that you gave me, Miranda. One is updated for the eighth member. And the other one is final. But there's nothing in here about conflict of interest.
So that's something that could be added if you wanted to, to the bylaws. Just something to think about. So I think you all know, I mean, as we just covered in, in the Board of Trustees rules, that if you, if there's a potential conflict, let's talk about it. You know, ideally, it's your decision as to whether you have a conflict or not. I mean, you know best if you have such a personal interest in a matter that you cannot make a fair decision. Other people can't really tell you that. And if you do have a conflict, then you've got to disclose it. You step down and cannot participate from the vote. You can't influence the vote. And then you cannot, obviously, you cannot vote in the matter. And there may be situations where you think that there's a possibility of a conflict or you just want to have a discussion about it. And, you know, after we have the discussion, you decide, okay, I feel like it can be fair. It can be impartial. I haven't prejudiced this application. Then at the start of the hearing, in that situation, you can make a statement on the record laying it all out as to why, what's the piece, what's the factual piece that maybe gives you some pause as to as to the personal interest, but explain why, in fact, you don't have a personal interest. And I know Commissioner Blake Moore, Commissioner Giblin has done this in the past related to providing public comment on an application when they were not commission members. That stated that they could be fair and impartial. And providing that statement goes a long way in a court process should there ever be a challenge as to your ability to serve as an unbiased mission member.
I, I'm thinking of that one case where I did have I had sent a letter to the planning commission about, or to the Board of Trustees expressing my opinion. I, I thought that was more ex parte rather than conflict of interest because it wasn't you know, I didn't really have a personal interest like maybe, you know, personal interest might be something like enjoying live music and going to different venues in town that have live music. But this was on a different application, so would an ex partake communication be considered? It wouldn't be considered a conflict of interest.
And that, yeah. That actually wouldn't, that wouldn't be an ex parte communication. Because when you made the communication, you weren't in the role of a member of the Board of Trustees or a member of the planning commission. So what your communication may suggest is that you have a strong opinion on the particular application. And it's, could be a strong personal opinion on the application. And that then could suggest to other people that you do have a conflict of interest, that you could not be impartial. And so that's why that's why you made the statement at the start of that hearing is because you said, you know, I don't have, I haven't prejudiced the application. I'm not impartial. Or I am impartial and I will listen to all the evidence and make a decision based on the evidence that's presented at this hearing.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
And the other thing here, and I, I think, I mean, you all have seen this recently. But if you if you recuse yourself with a conflict of interest right of way, you know, before the start of the hearing, and you feel strongly about an issue, you can participate as a member of the public and provide public comment on that matter. As long as you recuse yourself very early on in the process, then you can still, you can still participate and weigh in and provide public comment as a, as your First Amendment right. So any questions on pub, I mean, on conflicts of interest? And I'll move on to open meetings then. And this is all gonna be
Okay.
It's just gonna be very, very quick here. And this is all refresher for you, I'm sure. So for local bodies, a meeting is three or more members of the local body who meet to discuss public business. So should three of you go out for a beer, not discuss public business, it's not technically a meeting under the open meetings law. And so then you don't have to worry about the requirements related to meetings. If it is a meeting, notice must be posted 24 hours in advance of the meeting and minutes must be taken. So that's just a little bit of a, of a refresher. Any questions on open meetings?
So what does it mean by local body? Is that the planning commission or is it a combination of staff and planning commission?
It means the, it means the body that, it means planning commission, it would mean Board of Trustees. I know Nettleman takes a little bit of a conservative approach when you've got two members of the planning commission and a member of, well, I'm not sure if, and a member of the Board of Trustees that's been noticed as a meeting.
So that's three or more, that's total of all the bodies together.
And I don't know if that's what you do, Miranda.
That is what we do because in our marijuana task force meetings, we have two planning commission members and me, a Board of Trustees member, and we do announcements.
Oh, except for trustee Taylor, you're also a member of the planning commission.
That's an interesting point. Okay.
But I do, I mean, to that point, if there's more than two board members regardless of the boards they're on, I've just operated in the habit of noticing it.
And that's, and that's a very conservative approach. I mean, that's, that's to be safe.
Better safe than sorry is my thought.
That's very transparent. Yeah. And so that is actually the end of my slides here and I'm happy to answer questions. I hope that this was informative. If there was anything that I missed, maybe at some later date, we can come back and talk about whatever you have that's on your mind, that's of interest.
This is Jim Reese. I do have a question.
Yes.
So to a lesser or greater degree, we have certainly all seen some of these guidelines or rules broken. What's the brass tacks of consequences if we, if we mess up? If it turns out we have a conflict of interest and somebody votes on something that's, you know, a little more serious than some of the other ones, somebody asked me a couple of questions at the grocery store. But let's say we messed that up, what, what's the downside and the possible consequences to the town?
Well, I mean, that's a, that's a, a difficult question to answer in the vacuum of little factual details. You know, the typical lawyer response would be, it was, it depends. I will say that you guys, you're the planning commission. You sit on the planning commission. Typically, the Board of Trustees is going to be the final decision maker on any, on any application, certainly on any legislative process. And so mistakes at the planning commission level are not really going to affect the rights of the parties. That makes sense. That's not giving you, you know, kind of free for all to just throw out the rules and do whatever you want. Because the Board of Trustees also reviews your record. They get the meeting minutes and the notes. So hopefully that was a little bit helpful.
Well, I, I thought that maybe it was that it provided a little, if somebody decided to, you know, appeal this, but they wouldn't appeal our decision because they appealed that to the Board of Trustees. So we, we won't put the town in legal jeopardy as much as, say, these types of errors with the Board of Trustees.
Yeah, that's exactly, I mean, that is exactly right. The
It could, it could come back to the planning commission if, let's say there was an investigation on some serious matters that led to a decision. And, you know, the planning commission probably could be called into question, perhaps, but I would think it would be rare.
Right. And conflicts of interest too, there is a criminal statute on conflicts of interest. You know, if you're getting a bribe for your vote, that is, that's a criminal conduct and you could be prosecuted for that. And, you know, your decision is going to be part of the, of the record should the Board of Trustees matter be appealed to the district court. And anything that is not followed at the planning commission may be brought up at the, at the district court level to show that the town was biased against a particular applicant or to make, you know, general overall legal argument that the town had perhaps an agenda in denying a particular application.
I, I appreciate that. I, certainly we want to try and follow the best practices wherever possible, but you know, when mistakes are made, sometimes they're definitely to a lesser or greater degree depending on if we have an applicant who is, you know, prestigious and, or an industry that has a lot of money behind it and has the ability to, you know, to take the town to court. But good point, Steve, about the fact that, yes, anything we do and Jennifer can also be used as the official record. That's all my questions. Thank you.
I just want to thank Jennifer for this refresher. It, I found it very helpful.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
I agree with that. Thank you.
I'm sure we'll come up with some other gray areas as time goes on.
Oh, yes.
So we, we look forward to your guidance and, and appreciate you being able to help us, keep us straight, you know, herd the cats, so to speak.
I think one thing, you know, two things that would be helpful for you all and you know, I can work with Miranda and Cynthia for this, is that when an application is received, if an email could be sent to you all so that you know that an application is pending. And, I mean, that's the trigger of the ex parte rule. I mean, I'd hate for you to be caught off guard in the grocery store and have somebody approach you on something and you don't know that an application is pending. So I think that that would be helpful. And I think the other thing that we can do is put motions in the aim to, to help you with those motions to approve or motions to deny applications.
That, that's a good point because typically we don't know about the applications or specifically the details until we see the packet, which is
Right.
basically the week before the meeting. So, and if the application is filed a month ahead of time, yeah, we, we don't know about it. That's a good point.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thanks again, Jennifer. And I guess that brings us to any other business staff? Do you have any other business to bring up at this point?
I don't have anything.
I do not have anything either, Cynthia.
Actually, I have one question to Cynthia or Miranda, and that is to, there must be a number of minutes that we need to sign, both myself and Jim Reese. So do we need to come by and sign those or what's the process since we've had these virtual meetings?
Yeah, I will reach out to you. I am getting those prepared. I have a bunch for Roger to sign from 2022, given that we moved into a virtual meeting stance, but I, I am working on that. It's forthcoming.
Okay, I, I wasn't sure where we were on that and what we had to do, particularly with the virtual meeting, so.
Yeah, I'll reach out to you guys and let you know to swing by, come see us at the town hall and you can sign some. Roger's got a bunch from 2020.
Okay, all right. I didn't realize we were that far behind. Uh, because they're not official till we sign them, is that correct?
That's a good question for Jennifer.
Sorry. Um, I thought I was on mute. I'd have to, actually, frankly, I'd have to look at the specifics of state statute if there's any discussion about that on signing. My, I mean, my gut reaction is just by a motion to approve that they're approved.
Okay.
But I can look at the details.
Okay, does any other planning commission members have anything to bring up on, under other business? If not, we could, it'd be nice to have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Guys. Who is the motion by? I'm sorry. Three different people? I, I think I heard Commissioner Glasser.
This one to Linda.
Okay, we'll give one to Linda and then And then who is the second? I had another three people.
Uh, Karen.
We seconded the Helen.
We sure did. Are you guys sure you don't want to reconsider and maybe just stay for a little bit longer? It could be fun. So of those who are voting, we can just do a quick one. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okey dokey.
Okay.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:12 PM.
Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
See you later, bye.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.